Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to a public hearing held by the Urbana City Council for Monday, May 1st, 2023. This is a notice of a public hearing of the Urbana City Council to consider an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned real estate, 1811 East Florida Avenue and 1106 North Rice Street. I'd like to call to order this meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti? Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
This hearing is to receive public input regarding the sale of city-owned real estate, the manner of such sales, and a finding that the real estate to be sold is no longer needed for governmental purposes or proprietary activity of the city. Is there anyone wish to address the Urbana City Council on this topic? Seeing none, this hearing is closed and it is adjourned.
Tonight we have a committee of the whole meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti? Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
All right, the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of previous meetings for March 20th, 2023.
Move to approve the minutes for March 20th, 2023.
Second.
Moved by Sharice and seconded by Chris. Any corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, those are approved. Next item is additions to the agenda. We do have a request to add a proclamation for historic preservation after the presentations. I don't know if I need a motion for that. Ms. Clerk?
Yes, if you're adding.
All right, so I would entertain a motion to add the proclamation for historic preservation to the agenda.
Move to add the proclamation for historic preservation to the agenda?
Second.
Moved by Sharice and seconded by Grace. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
I'll wait next time. Sorry about that, James and Chandra. All right, so let's do presentations and public input. The first presentation we have is the introduction of the new arts program specialist in contract with 40 North, 88 East. Stephanie?
All right. Good evening. I'm sharing a few bits of exciting news today. We are very excited to introduce our new arts program specialist, Vivian Krishnan. Vivian comes to us with a Bachelor of Arts degree in printmaking and sculpture from Fort Lewis College and a Master of Fine Arts in theatrical design from the University of Illinois. The program specialist position provides support to the Urbana Arts and Culture Program through a wide range of administrative and promotional activities. The program specialist administers the annual grant program and outreach efforts, as well as provide staff support to the Arts and Culture Commission. Functions also include programming, such as workshops and events, development of marketing plans, and representation with community partners. Vivian Krishnan is an artist and art advocate who works with works that cross the vast stage of storytelling, from designing costumes for theatrical performances to writing and illustrating diverse children's books. Vivian received her bachelor's in Durango, Colorado, where she studied printmaking and sculpture. After working in LA and Denver for several years as an artist and master tailor, she moved to Urbana to complete her master's in costume design from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. Her focus is to perpetually make space for local artists in the CU area. Current projects include co-creating the residency program at Delight Flower Farm and organizing several art events as a seated board member at the Station Theater. Vivian began work with the city in mid-March and is already proving herself to be an incredible asset to our team. Also, we wanted to share with you, at the beginning of 2023, the city entered into a partnership agreement with 40 North, 88 West, which is the Champagne County Arts and Culture Organization, which is quote "dedicated to fueling the growth and well-being of Champagne County by nurturing its arts, culture, and education community through advocacy, information, and collaboration." The director of 40 North, Kelly White, an artist herself, has been involved with the organization since 2009 and has demonstrated success in supporting area artists, planning a wide variety of arts and culture events, and promoting arts activities throughout the region. The agreement with 40 North defines specific programs and events that will be coordinated by 40 North, including organizing three new downtown Urbana events during the summer of 2023 and developing a new reoccurring event based on input from the Public Rome Study and current partners, such as Urbana Park District, IMC, Urbana Free Library, and local businesses. 40 North will also be planning and hosting events specifically for artists, with several goals in mind. The first goal is to learn what challenges artists encounter in our community so that we can seek ways of addressing those needs with workshops, training, or resources. The second goal is connection, connecting artists to each other and also to businesses and property owners who may be seeking collaborative relationships to install public art or murals in privately-owned buildings. The agreement with 40 North is for three years and includes a seat on the Board of Directors for an Urbana representative, which I'm currently filling myself. Moving forward, staff is really pleased with the direction the Urbana Arts and Culture Program is moving, with the continuation of many of our popular programs. Murals installed over the past few years have been very well-received, and there's continued requests for more. Murals on glass, utility box murals, art in transit, as well as traditional murals, will continue as sites are identified. Plans are also being discussed for murals to be installed as part of the African-American Heritage Trail in Urbana. Collaborations with the Urbana Free Library on artists of the corridor and young artist studio will also continue. Urbana's new poet laureate, Janelle Davenport Pleasure, is planning multiple events for the upcoming year. An outgoing youth poet laureate, Denyla Lash, is wrapping up her tenure. Boneyard Arts Festival was held in April throughout all of Champagne County, and Urbana hosted the BAM, Boneyard Arts Market, at Lincoln Square Mall and Culture Fest in the Bucy Parking Lot. In addition to the new events being planned, Urbana Arts and Culture is also supporting the Candlelight Serenade at Crystal Lake Park, which will be held again this year on Friday, May 19th, with a rain date of Saturday, May 20th. Finally, the city has once again awarded close to 90,000 in arts grants for 2023, which include a wide variety of wonderful events, workshops, installations, and opportunities to see, hear, experience, and enjoy throughout the next year. Please see the document that Vivian created outlining details of each of this year's grant recipients. Vivian, Kelly, and I are all here and glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the people who are here? I'll give the people on the phone an opportunity after we take these questions. Sharice, do you have a question?
We had a couple of events, a couple, you know, pre-COVID that went around, that went well, like the Downtown Get Down and stuff like that. Are we also going to be reinvesting in that in any kind of way?
I'll ask Kelly to respond to that too, but that's one of the things, the new bigger event is going to be looking at something that would be a bigger event, maybe not Sweet Corn size, maybe more in line of a Downtown Get Down-type event. But Kelly, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, exactly what Stephanie said. We'll be taking input with different stakeholders that were involved with the Downtown Get Down. We were one of the partners for that event. And just really kind of getting some feedback on what worked, what didn't work. And we're going to build off that, as well as some of the newer things that are happening in downtown, to create a large event similar to that later this year.
Okay.
Grace?
Thanks so much, and welcome, Vivian, and thank you for being here, Kelly, and having this contract with us. And 40 North, just to clarify, is, you have a space in downtown Champagne, right? And do the Friday nights in downtown Champagne?
Yes, we were provided an in-kind space in downtown with the champagne county.
Great. And is there a cost in this partnership that we have? Is that an agreement here?
Yes, there's an agreement. It was $60,000 a year for the three years.
Thank you. All right, Chandra and James, do either of you have a question?
Yes, I have a question. When did the contract begin?
We were beginning at January 1st, but we didn't get started with our work. So we're going to amend that to start April 1st.
Of this year?
Correct.
And did, I don't recall this contract coming before council, did it?
No, the way the arts program is set up, we weren't required to come before council, and we used budgeted funds that were already approved for the arts program.
Okay. And then additionally, how will the collaboration with 40 North help the arts program compared to hiring a coordinator? Having hired a coordinator?
Yeah, our previous position was an arts coordinator, and Vivian is an arts specialist. So we previously had a part-time arts specialist, and we revised that job description, so it's now a full-time. So her position is kind of a combination of what our part-time arts specialist did and a little bit of what our arts coordinator did. This will give her a chance to train and get up to speed with all the detailed, what's the word I want? Organization of all the arts grants, which is kind of a cumbersome process and a lot to learn, to keep track of all of those and the payments and requisitions and all of that that needs to be done, and get familiar with the artists in our community.
James, do you have any questions?
Thank you, and welcome, Vivian. Done for me.
All right. Okay, thank you so much. Welcome again to the city. Thank you very much for your partnership. Vivian had just something she wants to say.
I just wanted to say hello and that I'm really excited to be here, representing the Urbana Arts and Culture. And just with not yet two months being here, it's just been really exciting seeing the progress that's already been put in place in terms of enriching the lives of our community. And I love living in Urbana, so I'm really happy to be here.
Welcome.
And I just wanted to mention how excited I am. I've been with 40 North for a long time, and we've always worked very closely with the city of Urbana. But I'm thrilled that we can work even harder to expand the programs we have, create new programs, streamline calls for artists. I think it's already thriving, but we're going to make it even better. So thank you all so much.
Thank you. All right, next up is Examine Urbana Arts and Cultures, which is timely. Wonder if there's any coordination?
Thank you for having us this evening, and you've already heard several of the chapters. After arts and culture, we have two more to go, and it's housing and energy and the environment. And for those of us, or those of you that don't know the website, it's urbana-imagineurbana.us, so.
Just a quick correction, it's examine.urbanillinois.
Oh, did I say imagine? Yeah, sorry.
UrbanaIllinois.us. So the city's URL, and instead of WWW, it's just dot. Examine.urbanIllinois.
Sorry, mixed up the website, so, thank you. So Lily's going to cover arts and culture. She worked on this with the previous arts director that we had, and so Lily is very familiar with us and going to share that.
Yeah, so I'm going to cover arts and culture. And as Andrea mentioned, worked a lot with Dr. Rachel Storm on a lot of the material in this story map, this chapter. But this is actually a really fun one. It's one of the most visually striking and content-rich chapters. So there's a lot of videos, for instance. So if you're watching this at home and you go to check this chapter out, you turn on the sound, if you can, and watch some of the videos. There's a lot of really good ones. And then there's also, you know, a lot of links to the full-length videos, a lot of different kind of rabbit holes for you to kind of keep exploring Urbana's arts and culture program. So as how this pertains to the comprehensive plan, we're really talking and trying to showcase different, how the art, the city of Urbana's program, how it interacts with people, how it's a front-facing, frontline kind of part of the city of Urbana, what that means for its culture, and what it means for its connection to the whole community and its region, and how the program really works as well. This was reviewed in July last year from the Arts and Culture Commission, and I think the Arts and Culture Commission really enjoyed just learning different parts of it. Maybe if you're really specific into different elements of arts scene, and you're just really into theater or music, or whatever it may be, you kind of learn a little bit about everything. And we just touch on as much as we could in a website. So just quickly going through some of the highlights. If you go to how the program works, you can kind of find more about how its budget allocations, the people that are involved, and how the program, how its impact on the community. But just for instance, we studied the 2019 year for, because it was a complete data set for us in the arts and culture program. And just in 2019, as you can see, you know, the arts grant program is roughly half of the budget for the program. And you have your Tier One, your Tier Two, and Tier Three. That's just a really fancy way of saying really big festivals, which are four of them. Medium-sized festivals, events, and programs that often have a lot of spin-off events themselves. And Tier One, which sometimes can be very extensive festivals, but they could also be artist projects. So it just depends on the kind of funding level that they're requesting from the city of Urbana and what their capacity is for a matching portion. And then you see all these green events. These are all events that were held just from city staff in collaboration with a lot of our community partners. The normal cast of characters is oftentimes the Urbana Park District, the Urbana Free Library, the Urbana and Champagne Independent Media Center. Oftentimes, you'll see a lot of these collaborations, and that is a lot for one year. And that was coming out of this investment that the city makes. We talk in this chapter about its history, and starting in 2008, which is kind of neat, because this is the 15th anniversary of the program. How it got started, it always had a role of economic development and partnering with our various economic development projects that we have going on town. This is a really good video of a downtown business owner who's talking about the benefits of having a mural on their building, and how they partnered with the artist and worked with the arts and culture program. The full-length video, again, is here, but you can kind of turn on the sound in a lot of these videos on this chapter, and you can listen into the snips that we've selected. As far as the impact, that's probably one of the most interesting parts, and kind of more the difficulty of putting this chapter together. So of the three tiers, we kind of dig into, just as an example, the Tier Three, the large festivals. They can be up to $10,000 grants in the arts grant program. That oftentimes has, that has different kinds of levels of effect. We zoom into the CU Folk and Roots Festival. That $9,000 that we gave them, the city of Urbana granted them in 2019, that was 10% of the festival's annual budget, but it supported 44 of their free events and programming that year. So that's pretty good. That's the whole festival, the three-day festival had 70 events. It had over 300 artists, and it had about 1,500 to 3,000 participants. I think this festival was very, very judicious about counting participants. Some festivals, as you can see, and we just kind of pull a little bit further back, and we can really look at how some, the characteristics of different festivals. For instance, Sweet Corn Festival has probably the smallest amount of events and artists, but has the largest amount of participants. It's in the almost tens of thousands of participants. Whereas you have something like Boneyard Arts Festival, which has some of the highest amount of events and artists, and it has a very good and substantial amount of participants, maybe not at the same kind of scale of Sweet Corn. So different kinds of characteristics to these large, large festivals. And here we do link, and we have the numbers for you to input yourself, of the American for Arts Calculator. They have an investment calculator where you can put in the size of the community, your participants, and the dollars that we have put in these text bubbles, and you can kind of see for yourself what different kinds of impacts you can generate just for the revenue of state and local governments. For the Tier Three grants in 2019, it's estimated a $50,000 of revenue in state and local governments. That's sales tax, food and beverage, things that oftentimes local and state governments benefit from having this economic development activity in these arts and culture festivals. So just a lot of different effects that kind of bubble up off of this. And by zooming into Tier Three, you know, we don't want to, don't want to get, forget that, you know, there were seven other festivals that year, and there were probably a couple more in Tier One. So that you can keep digging into this, we go over a couple of other examples in here. We go over the effects of 2019. The arts and culture program almost expanded in COVID-19, which is kind of incredible, because nearly every single program that arts and culture had been doing in 2019 had to be redone, or reinvented, or just completely new in order to be safe and distanced in 2020, 2021. So we go through a lot of that and what it's done, the effects of some of its outdoors. These are all programs that got started during the pandemic. Yeah, that's a lot. And again, many videos that you can see, there were a lot of online artist performances and festivals. There were a lot of outdoors adaptations. This one right here is actually something that was done with 40 North. We have the poet laureate program. We go into a little bit more of that. As we get a little bit further down, and we talk about the impact that we've seen, you know, and it's the outreach that we have generating buzz across the community, we have some future considerations. And this is a nice end to this chapter, where we really try to boil it down to three to four things that maybe weren't touched on a lot in the chapter above, in this case. But instead, they're really spelled out as kind of considerations, where the arts and culture program, what are we going to do moving forward? What we want the reader to kind of start thinking about. Great, we're doing a lot to reach different communities in different ways with arts and culture, but what are we going to do with some of the challenges that we have coming ahead? And yeah, that's the arts and culture chapter.
Thank you. We're going to do the reverse now. We're going to give James and Chandra a first stab at asking questions. James, do you have any questions? Chandra?
I don't have a question. I just want to say thanks again for all of the wealth of information that is available in this program. I've been encouraging the folks in the Southeast Urban Neighborhood Association to take a look at this as we get ready for the engagements this summer.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
All right. Anybody here in the council chambers? Chris?
Not so much a question, but a comment. I was there in 2006 when this was just an idea on Danielle Chinoweth's dining room table. Since she's here tonight, I have to acknowledge her. And I'm just amazed how it's grown and how it's developed, and the way we've really established a quality program with so many things going on, and so many different genres and art forms. Obviously, it's my wheelhouse. This is what I studied at the university, and it's my favorite thing, is art. But I just want to make a case for the reason why we have smooth roads, the reason why we put out the fires, and the reason why we put out, you know, we have, you know, protect public safety, is for a quality of life. And this is part of our quality of life here in Urbana, these things going on. And it's true, it can be an economic engine and generate economic activity in our town. So, and everywhere I've ever gone in the United States, places that have sculptures and murals and dancing and music and, you know, ceramics and just, you know, teaching kids how to do art and all that, that's, you know, life. And it's, so I just want to say that while it's, you know, it's crazy, they spent 90,000 on art, well, it's worth it. And I just thank you all for keeping it going, and really am proud of Urbana for doing this.
Anyone else? Grace?
Thanks much for the presentation on this section. I just want to say that I also really liked some of the inclusivity and looking at physical access and being more diverse and inclusive. And I liked the sensory-sensitive concerts and things. So just wanted to point that out and appreciate that aspect.
I think I've been a part of the concerts that the city of Urbana has been a part of, where, you know, there's bows on cymbals and a lot of noise. So it is really great when we started doing the sensory-sensitive concerts.
All right. Thank you so much. I guess we'll see you at least two more times.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. All right, we are going to move forward with the proclamation, and then after that, there will be public input.
Thank you. I have a proclamation, and this is regarding historic preservation. Whereas, historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas, the city of Urbana has a historic preservation plan and has designated 18 local historic landmarks and three historic districts. And whereas, historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas, it's important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals and helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas, the city of Urbana has recognized the importance of expanding the range of allowed residential and commercial uses for historic properties through its recently adopted R7 University Residential Zoning Amendment, with the first conversion project already in progress. And whereas, owners of commercial and residential historic properties continue to renovate their landmarks to the glory of their former heyday, including the Nathaniel Cohen Building in downtown Urbana. And whereas, the Urbana Historic Preservation Commission is promoting the enjoyment of our local historic resources through a guided walking tour of the recent restorations in Buena Vista Court Historic District in observance of National Historic Preservation Month. Now, therefore I, Diane Wolf-Marlin, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as National Historic Preservation Month, and call upon the people of Urbana to join their fellow residents across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. And I now declare or proclaim the month of May 2023 as National Historic Preservation Month in the city of Urbana, Illinois.
Thank you. Now it's time for public input. If you wish to address the body, please step up to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
My name is Jen Straub. I live in Urbana. I serve on the Champagne County Board, and I spend my days working as a housing case manager at Cunningham Township, where, since our housing advocacy program began in July of 2020, we've assisted 127 homeless households in obtaining housing. We did most of that because of emergency housing vouchers made available by the federal government during the pandemic. There's honestly not a better feeling in the world than getting a family into housing, hands down. Don't tell my kids. Subsidized housing, like vouchers, means that families have safe roofs over their head tonight. Parents can work on attending to their jobs or furthering their education to provide greater opportunities for their families instead of worrying where they're going to sleep tonight. Subsidized housing means that kids can attend school regularly and feel success when they're there. I truly believe that subsidized housing creates ripples that make our whole community more prosperous and more safe. Won't talk me out of that. But not only that, subsidized housing is the only pathway to housing that many of our elders and disabled heads of household have at all. Today, I met with someone who only receives $609 per month. Today I met with someone who only receives $609 per month in social security disability. There is no path forward for that person without a voucher. That's it. If she doesn't have a subsidy, there is no path out of homelessness. And their story's not unique. I have a running list of people just like that in my files. Vouchers put dollars directly into the pockets of local landlords, and it's safer money than it would be to renting for folk, or renting to folks without vouchers. If I lose my job, if my husband loses his job, we can't pay our bills. If someone with a voucher loses their job, they can go to their voucher specialist and recalibrate their voucher until they obtain income again. Discrimination against voucher holders isn't about vouchers. It's just plain old discrimination, and poverty isn't contagious, I promise. Our community needs to hold ourselves to a higher standard. We're Urbana. Our most vulnerable, the kids, the disabled, the elders, deserve our protection. Please pass the resolution ensuring fair housing rights for voucher holders in Urbana. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the body tonight?
Good evening. For six years, I have served as the Cunningham Township Supervisor, where our primary focus has been building programs to address homelessness and housing insecurity in our community. I'm here, here to testify that discrimination has a lot been well in our housing market, and for as long as I can remember, and I served on city council in the, between 2001 and 2008, has largely remained unchecked by the city. I want you to imagine, you work 60 hours a week at minimum wage to afford a $686 apartment or become one of the two out of three Urbana renters who's rent burdened. You wait three years for the Housing Authority to open its waitlist, that's the average. You become one of 5,200 households who sign up in a three-week period, that's a fact. If luckily, you're one of the 1,500 out of the 5,200 drawn randomly to be on the voucher list, waitlist, you will wait three more years, that's the average, to receive a voucher. You figure out how to get out of your current unit once you get a voucher. You start looking for housing, only to navigate many signals. Student housing, are you a student? How many in your family? List all sources of income. You pay $25 to $40 per application for housing, paying hundreds in a short timeframe. You don't hear anything back. You're told your credit score is too low. It's not. Afraid to spend more on app fees, you start asking landlords upfront, do you take vouchers? We don't take vouchers. We don't work with the Housing Authority. We don't allow inspections. All true stories. You pass the two-month deadline for finding housing, and you ask the Housing Authority for an extension, knowing that at three months, you will lose your voucher and you will have to start over. Starting over means waiting another three years for another opening and going through that selection process. This is a true story. You find a landlord, because you're desperate, who says they will take vouchers, but the quality of that apartment is poor. They seem to be slum lords who are slow to fix things. It's in a dangerous area of town, several bus transfers to your work, and far from resources. Now multiply that by hundreds of families per year. The result of this discrimination is evident in this community: homelessness, housing insecurity, employment insecurity, victimization, segregation, and community safety issues. For those few who have read Urbana Human Rights Ordinance, this is a scenario so many local residents face that may come as a surprise. We have one of the best laws on the books. It was the product of the 60s and 70s, the justice movements of that time. In fact, Urbana-listed sexual orientation and gender identity has protected classes in 1975, four years before San Francisco. But laws are only as good as their enforcement. I want to share a timeline of factual events that makes me say that you need to pass the resolution before you and do more. In 2008, our office at Township released a detailed report listing discrimination. I presented this human rights commission and shared it with the mayor, who was very open to receiving it. October 2020, I emailed that, that Town and Country had a selection criteria for tenants that was illegal. I got a supportive email back acknowledging that criteria was not legal, but also that we had a vacant HRO. So then I asked for an action plan against discrimination. We conducted a tenant rights campaign. We put a landlord piece in with the rental registration. I appreciate that it saved us both money to let landlords know what the law was. This is back in 2019. In January 5th of 2022, we received an email from Town and Country that says, "We're not able to sign a payment agreement, we don't allow inspections." I met with Carla Boyd that month. She, we, I shared scenarios we were seeing. She said she had had six complaints in housing discrimination in her first eight months. All, all of her complaints were in housing. After that, we saw some progress. We got one man who submitted a complaint, the city negotiated, is able to move in. Spring, we put together a coalition and helped pass the Source of Income Act. Ms. Boyd sent a letter, landlords, we sent a letter as well. But in the fall of 2022, something seems to have changed. RPC reached out to do workshops with tenants. I met with the city to request, and so we wanted to do a workshop on fair housing, and the city was at the table. I met with the city administration to request a partnership in housing expansion, and I was told by Carol Mitten that the city's position is they do not want affordable housing in downtown Urbana. November, Carol Mitten told the council member she thought this was unenforceable. Sometime in between, so we had several complaints, and then essentially the city made a statement March 20th that they would, that source of income was unenforceable and that landlord participation was voluntary. I followed up with a letter. We held a workshop.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Ms. Boyd said that she was enforcing it. Several weeks later, the mayor said it would be enforced. Then we heard from Carol Mitten, it's not enforced. We need clarity.
Ms. Chenoweth, if you would like to, if you'd like to send additional comments?
Yes, I will send, I will send the complete letter, but there's a history here where it's very unclear. We're getting lots of different stories about what's happening. The council?
Thank, thank you for your input.
It's the will of the people, not the staff.
Would anybody else like to address the body?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Anna Howe. I'm a lifelong Urbana resident, and I've spent the last eight months as a social work intern in Cunningham Township's Housing Advocacy Division. I reported to the town board last month on my findings from an evaluation of Township's housing programs. The finding I want to reiterate tonight is the importance of vouchers for our participants' success. Use of a housing voucher is a key indicator of long-term housing stability for the individuals we work with. Those moving from homelessness to housing are disproportionately households led by single parents, people with disabilities, and racial minorities. Choosing not to enforce source of income discrimination would hurt our most vulnerable residents and reduce the already small number of units they can move into. There just are not enough low-income housing units in our community to support these folks paying at market rate, which potentially returns them to a state of homelessness, precarious housing, or forces them to make tough decisions on what bills to pay. Vouchers provide stable income to landlords and decrease the strain on our already overburdened social safety net. Given all of this, I urge you to pass tonight's resolution in support of fair housing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Hi, my name is Esther Pat, and I'm the Director of the Champaign-Urbana Tenant Union. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the resolution in support of fair housing for all regardless of source of income. As, as has already been mentioned, the most vulnerable people in our community, children, people with disabilities, and senior citizens, need you to raise your voice for them and declare that every class of people deserves equal access to housing, and that includes access to housing for people who use vouchers. A suggestion was made by the city attorney to change the Ninth Whereas Clause, which I actually wrote without checking with anyone in response to a comment from Ms. Wilkin a few, several weeks ago, and actually, the city attorney's language is better, so I suggest you use it. He suggested you write, "Courts in the United States have rejected landlords' claims that they would experience a financial burden by accepting a housing choice voucher because they were unable to show that signing the Housing Assistance Program contract and allowing a rental unit to be inspected involved any additional cost." And I want to stress that point, it's just, of all the things, I want to remind you that this program, Section 8, which here it's Housing Choice Voucher, has been in place for 49 years. This argument, all the arguments you've heard have been orally expressed back and forth in cities and states all over the place. And what's really interesting about this one, and it was, and this was mentioned to you on March 20th in the explanation about the case that was, the lawsuit that was filed against City of Urbana and then was dismissed in, in 1997. It was dismissed not because the argument lacked merits, but because there were no facts for, for the court to try. The, and, and it's, it's really what Jen Straub had said earlier, the, the objection to accepting vouchers is prejudice against people with vouchers. There is no additional cost. So just so you understand the point, it isn't a matter of there is a burden and courts have to debate whether it's an undue burden. Landlords have been unable to even suggest examples of how it would be a burden at all because it isn't. It's just accepting money. In fact, I would point out that if a landlord accepts rent by credit card, there's a 4% charge on every payment that the landlord has to pay. And there actually are some landlords who put in their lease, if you pay by credit card, the rent's 4% more, and that's why, which is, it's in their actual cost. But accepting payment by credit card is more of a burden, a business burden and a cost than accepting a voucher, which has a 0% charge to it. I also do want to say though, that the other suggestion about changing the language to reflect your accounting for the possibility of a future court case reversing the precedent is a suggestion you should reject. There's no justifiable reason to single out fair housing law, or this fair housing law, and identify it as different from all other laws that ever existed, and say this one is transient or, or transitory while everything else is sealed in stone. Any existing law might change, and if the law does change in the future, you can pass another resolution. People who use vouchers and all the social service providers who are working daily to resolve and prevent homelessness really need you to speak up for them. And if you don't, only the voices that are in opposition to the law will be heard. The property owners who offer rental housing to the general public need to hear the collective voice of the Urbana City Council stating that use of a voucher is not grounds for disparate treatment or denial of housing. Modifying your statement of the support of the law indicating expectation it will change, whether or not this is your intent, and I don't think this was the intent of the suggestion, but doing that does leave people believing that it is your intent or desire to change the law. The whole purpose of this resolution is to say to people who still, after 44 years, are still questioning whether this law is really the law, that yes, the Urbana City Council says this is the law, and that people who use rental vouchers or housing choice vouchers or any rent assistance will be treated equally, or at least should be, and if not, the city of Urbana is on the side of the victims of the unequal treatment. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your input. Anybody else like to address council? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Marina Manetti, and I've been living in Urbana since I came to the University of Illinois in 1977, with a short period in East Lansing and back. For me, it's shameful that I live in a city where there are homeless people. For me, it's shameful that people can have to face the elements of nature with children. The trauma that's generated by this is just unspeakable. And then we have to deal with the consequences of it. That landlords don't even respect vouchers that have been issued by the government is outrageous. It's very difficult for me to even conceive of such things, and I'm told that these are true things. But we have to live with all the consequences of these vile circumstances that we're living in. There was a, a man called Chisere Becaria that said if a person is punished worse than for the threat that they were facing, so if a person who's starving steals food to eat, and then they're executed for that, or have their hands cut off or whatever, put in prison for extended periods of time in dismal conditions, that is unfair. And here are people who don't even have homes with children, old people, sickly people. They have vouchers, and that's not being respected. That's outrageous. It's inhuman because living on the street with no shelter is intolerable, in winter, in rain, in tornadoes. This is the least we can do, is make sure that these vouchers are respected by landlords who have a comfortable home. If there were a way that each of us citizens could give a hand on this, I would be totally interested. I have room in my backyard for anyone who needs to set up some kind of thing. They also, I mean, somehow we need to open up our homes. Everyone should have a home. Everyone.
Thank you for your input. Would anybody else like to address the council at this time? All right, seeing none. We did have two emails, although Ms. Pat did speak today, so that is in everybody's email. There was one other email from Myra, Myra Ryan, that says, "Dear Urbana City Council Members, I'm writing to express my strong support for the city council resolution in support of fair housing for all regardless of source of income. Passage of the resolution confirms the city's commitment to uphold its own ordinances and support fair housing practices which are foundational to a healthy community. Thank you for your consideration." Does anybody else have any electronic items that need to be read at this time? Chandra James, do you have any electronic items that need to be read at this time?
I do not.
All right, moving on. I've lost my agenda. There we go. Moving on, a staff report, are there staff reports this evening? Mayor?
I have a number of announcements. First of all, I want to remind the community that this Thursday, May 4th, is the moderated town hall, and it's an opportunity for the community to ask questions and meet the finalist for police chief. This will be held at Vineyard Church at 1500 North Lincoln Avenue. There are two sessions that people can attend, one or both if they want, one from 3:30 to 5:00, and the other one from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. And again, that's May 4th at Vineyard Church. Secondly, I want to invite everyone to go to the groundbreaking ceremony for the Health and Wellness Center on East Washington Street. This will be held at Prairie Park. This is the Urbana Park District project that the city invested $2 million in ARPA funds, and the county added another half million. So this project will really be, it'll transform that site and this part of the community. So again, that's Saturday, May 6th, 10:00 a.m. at Prairie Park. I also left a, provided an invitation to council members, and it also is extended to the community, to join us at Urbana High School Gymnasium on May 10th. to join us at Urbana High School Gymnasium on May 10th, 6:00 p.m. This is for the mayoral recognition award ceremony. This is the second year we've done this, and this is to recognize students who have put in volunteer work in the community. And I'm really happy to announce that we have 95 students this year who's receiving recognition, and they've donated over 5100 hours of volunteer service. And we're going to recognize those efforts. And that's double what we had last year. So I hope you can join and help us celebrate all the good work that students are doing in our community and support the teachers, mentors, family members, and community members who have helped them achieve that. Number four, I wanted to let you know that this afternoon, I swore in three probationary police officers today, and they will begin their training at the Police Training Institute. And we have four more new officers who will soon begin their field office, their field training as well. So we've, I want to recognize the efforts of the Human Resources Department here at the city, who has worked very hard to recruit excellent candidates. And this is going a long way toward filling our vacant positions on the police force. And lastly, I wanted to say just thank you to first responders, Urbana Public Works, community volunteers, and all the people who participated in some way to make the Christie Clinic Race Weekend a huge success. We can't take credit for the weather, but that also was a big plus. But anyway, it was a, it was a great event. I think at least 10,000 participants this year in the various races. And it was, it was a joyful experience from beginning to end. So a heartfelt thank you to everyone who made that a success. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other staff reports this evening? Oh, all right. Moving on to new business. We have, the first item is ordinance number 2023-05012, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Sale of Certain Real Estate at 1811 East Florida Avenue and 1106 North Wright Street." Scott, are you here to tell us about this?
Good evening, mayor and council. This item is an ordinance to dispose of two pieces of property the city has owned for 25 and 30 years respectively, making no use of either property in that time except to cut the grass. Neither of these properties is a buildable lot that is from zoning and easements. We're not going to be able to fit a house on either one of those lots. And neither of these properties is described as having a use in the facility's master plan. And so staff is recommending sale of both of these properties. The property on East Florida is adjacent to Thomas Payne Elementary School. And so staff is recommending a sale for $1 of that parcel to the school district. The parcel on North Wright is actually carved out of the larger parcel just to the north of it some number of years ago. And we actually discussed this property a year or two ago at council. And counselors gave recommendation to staff to spend some more time working to get a hold of the property owner of that parcel to the north with an eye towards reconnecting those two parcels so that it's a full residential parcel. That property at that time was in probate as the owner had died. Staff has been in contact with one of the potential inheritors of that property, and it's still in probate. That inheritor is interested in reconnecting those properties and in receiving that, the portion that the city owns. We've written, because probate is not over on that, on that property, we've written the ordinance as such that the city would be able to sell our portion to whoever became the owner of that property just to the north. I'll take any questions you may have.
All right, we're going to start in the chambers. Questions for Scott. Sharice?
Yeah. Because it was, it was, it said in the thing that you purchased, you purchased the 1106 property from somebody. And I guess my question is, they didn't have any kind of, well, I guess when I look at the map, all of the properties are that same size except that one little piece. How, what was that for anyway? What was that designated for? To be such a small parcel cut off from the parcel to the north?
Yeah, our, our surveyor at Public Works looked into the history of both of these properties. What he could find was that from aerial photography, it looks like there was a house on both of those parcels. So in a time before a lot of zoning rules about minimum lot size, someone carved off a small piece on the back of that and had a small house on it, so we think, just, just judging from the aerial photography. At some point, both of those houses were demolished. And at some point, the city became an owner of one of them.
Okay. Because, yeah, when I look at the, just the way that everything is set up on each street, everything goes all the way back to that alley.
Right.
And then you have that one little piece right there for 11, 1411 that doesn't, just doesn't make sense to me. Okay, so thank you.
Grace?
Thanks. Thanks, Scott, for the presentation. And just wanted to share too, some things for, thank you for getting to my questions before, if I may share, unless you'd like to.
No, go ahead.
Thank you for clarifying that you said that staff did consider other options for these. And as you brought up a little bit of the history and even reached out to MTD, because the question was about if other things had been considered, especially Florida. It looks like it could be a cool little place for a little pocket pollinator garden or a bench, a little solar pavilion, could have some potentials right there and by the school. But you said there weren't other interests, and it makes sense with the school. And then I also just mentioned that the Sustainability Advisory Commission in one of our recent meetings was asking about properties for things like planting fruit trees and other kinds of community garden spaces. So also just to throw out into the ESOS for staff and all sorts of departments, if there are lots of green space that the city is looking to get rid of, that there is interest in trying to make them into a community asset. My question here was, do you know what the school district plans to do with this parcel?
No.
Because again, I think it just, I think this makes sense. And I'd also just love, in an ideal world where there could be some kind of partnership and we could make it into more than just a turf grass lot that gets mowed and isn't really an asset. I think that would be really cool on that thoroughfare. Too bad MTD wasn't interested in it. But in the future, I'm definitely interested in if we are able to partner and make it more than what it is. Thanks.
Any other questions from the chambers? All right, Chandra and James, do either of you have questions?
I guess this isn't directly about the 1811 property, but I'm curious, did we do something like this already with 1809? A little triangle next to it?
1809 is currently owned by the school district. I, I don't recall if we, if the city owned that at one point or not.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Chandra, do you have any questions?
I don't, but I agree with what Grace said. I like the idea of making it a, something that could be sustainable or, you know, something productive. But if it's too small, it's too small. But hopefully, you know, maybe the school district will do something with it. But no questions, thank you.
All right, if there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion. Sharice?
I'll move for ordinance number 2023-05-012, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Sale of Certain Real Estate at 1811 East Florida Avenue and 1106 North Wright Street" for a consent agenda for council.
Second.
Moved by Sharice and seconded by Chris. Any discussion? We'll start with the telephone attendees right now. James and Chandra, do you have any discussion?
None, thank you.
All right, anybody within council chambers? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Oh, this ordinance, we got to vote now, yeah. All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right, that moves on to city council. The next new business is ordinance number 2023-05013, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Sale of Certain Real Estate at 903 North Division, 1605 Wiley, and 1107 North Gregory." Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Kim Smith, Community Development Services Director. Sheila Dada, Grants Manager, is unexpectedly out with a family emergency, so I'm covering for her. The request is for an ordinance authorizing the sale of the, of the real estate properties. The subject properties are 903 North Division, 1107 North Gregory, 1605 Wiley. They are required through the Grants Management Division's Transitional Housing Program using supportive housing program and home funds. The program was consolidated with other HUD Competitive Homeless Assistance Grants programs to create the Continuum of Care Program. The city no longer receives funding to support the program and has been using community development block grant funds. Approval of this ordinance would authorize the Housing Authority of Champaign County to purchase the properties and to continue to use them as affordable, to use them as affordable rental units. The appraised value is $290,000. The Housing Authority of Champaign County would continue to use the properties as the affordable rental units for those at or below 60% median family income. And that would continue to support affordable housing in Urbana. Fiscal impacts transferring the properties, and again, it's 903 North Division, 1605 Wiley, 1107 North Gregory, would eliminate the cost of running the Transitional Housing Program incurred by the city. It would also free up additional staff time for other priorities related to future CDBG and home projects. The properties, again, will continue as affordable rental housing, which is in high need in the community. The Community Development Commission and staff recommend forwarding the ordinance to the Urbana City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Questions for Kim? Let's start in the council chambers. Grace?
Thank you. I have a few, I'll do one. But I have more if we loop back around. We're, and I appreciate Kimberly, you coming in kind of, I know you don't have all the background since you're starting here. So again, welcome. And question for also, if other members of exec might have better answers on the background here. I was wondering if there were other proposals or options for these houses that were also considered?
Not that I'm aware of. I, I know that Sheila has been in conversation with Housing Authority about this because this is their, this is their bread and butter. This is what they do. And so they were, they were an obvious recipient of, of these houses to continue the, the mission that we started.
Any other questions in the chamber? Grace, did you have another one?
Yeah, I didn't know if you wanted to go around or?
Chandra and James, do you have any questions for Kim?
I do, yes. Was the, or maybe it's for Carol. Was the Cunningham Township considered as a recipient of these? Because they also do transitional housing and they have those apartments as well. So they've been running this sort of same type of program?
I, I'm not aware of specific conversations that Sheila had with the township about this.
That's surprising, thank you.
James, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay, all right. Any other questions in the chamber? Grace?
Thank you. One of my other questions was if we could learn a little bit more about the affordable housing and that timeline. I didn't see in the contract where it says the timeline and kind of where it mentions that these will be used for affordable housing for any period of time.
That's a question I think we're going to have to defer to Sheila. And, and I, I could venture an answer, but I think I would be taking a little bit too much creative license in giving the answer. So if we can get the answer, if you're, if you're willing to move it forward to council, we can get the answer for you for next week.
Great, thank you. Another question was, I was curious about why we would consider putting these funds into CDBG when, as I recall, we've had some issues with recently spending that balance down on time. And so I was curious on that one first.
I can keep, I can keep going if you want me to. Okay. So in the, in the time since we did the briefing about the timeliness issue that we had, we've actually caught up. And I think there was a very strong feeling about making sure that the, the proceeds, notwithstanding the, the timeliness question, which is now resolved, I think there was a strong sense that the, that the proceeds from this go back into that program and not, and not be spent on something else. So to, so to continue to support affordable housing in Urbana.
Are you saying, were they purchased with CDBG funds in the first place? Or that's not what you were saying there?
I think that that's at least part of the source of money. That's certainly what we've used to maintain the houses over time. I don't know exactly what the source was originally for, for all of them. But given that these houses were devoted to transitional housing, and if we do, if we do reserve this money for use in the CDBG pot, in the home fund pot, that will continue to help support affordable housing in Urbana, which I think is the goal.
Great, thank you for the explanation. And I definitely hear and agree with that, of that being the goal of these funds going back into helping with housing services and community development. I'm just, another kind of specifically question too, thinking about the CDBG slash, is there another pot of money? I know they're also going to home, but also just thinking about with CDBG that we've had some limitations in the past about like 15% limit on social services, for example, and what defines affordable housing based on HUD things. And, you know, I was just wondering if there might be a more flexible pot of money that this could go into and still be used specifically for the purposes we're intending of towards housing and helping those most vulnerable in the community. But not, I just don't know if that, if that pool of money is necessarily CDBG is the best fit. So just a thought question.
We'll try to get you a response on that too.
Thank you.
Sorry, if there's no further questions, I will entertain a motion. Oh, DeChandra, do you have a question?
I do have another question.
All right, go for it.
Yes. I mentioned township before. Is there any way that like something in the agreement could say that the Housing Authority could work with township as those individuals may get first priority for the houses since they're in Urbana? And I don't know, I just think that, oh, not considering township as maybe the, the owners of, of these three transitional houses is kind of a slight.
Well, first of all, I just want to clarify. I didn't say there weren't conversations. I said I wasn't aware of them, just to be clear. And I don't know, we could talk about some kind of, what are you suggesting, like a preference for township clients?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, and if there's a conversation that was had, maybe I'll send Sheila an email after this meeting to see if there had been conversations that maybe you didn't know about. But I'm just curious to see, was township considered? But I'm just curious to see, was township considered? And if their clients could, yes, have a little bit of a preference when considering filling these houses?
Okay, thanks. I got it.
Yes, Grace?
It's not a question, but while we're on that train of thought, I'm also curious, and I agree with that idea of kind of preference possibly for township clients slash also just Urbana residents in general. I don't know if that's another way to look at it.
Charisse?
I just realized I do have a couple of questions. One of the questions I have regarding these addresses, because I tried to look them up online. And what I wanted to understand, it looks as if the one on Division is a single-family home, is?
I believe they all are.
They're all single-family homes? Okay, so these particular houses that would be rented would not be one of, would not be like for several different people or anything like that, would be rented for a family, they would be family rentals? That's what I wanted to understand.
I don't know the units of people that get, that I think we have rented them to families typically. But I don't know that somebody would necessarily be excluded if they weren't a conventional family.
Right, I mean, I'm not trying to say that, oh, you can't be single, or you have to be a family, no, that's not what I'm trying to say. I'm just trying to understand the, if it was an apartment building or duplex or something like that, because I could only see like the front facade of some of one of them, actually, I didn't even see anything from there.
My understanding is they're all, each of them is a single-family home.
Okay, thanks.
All right, I will go back to, I will entertain a motion.
I'm sorry, I have one other question. Are the homes occupied as of now, what are they being used for?
I don't know. Do you know?
We're collecting all these questions and we will have these for you for next time.
I'd like to make a motion to keep this in committee till we get some of these answers. And especially the conversation with township, I think should be had as well. That's my motion.
Second.
All right, so just so the audience knows, I'm gonna read the full ordinance. So ordinance number 2023-05013, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate at 903 North Division, 1605 Wiley, and 1107 North Gregory has been moved to keep it in committee by Chandra and seconded by Grace. Any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to suggest that, I don't know that we need to keep it in committee because, of course, if we move it to city council next week and we don't have the answers we need, we could put it back in committee. And I will also point out that we will have a township meeting, a town board meeting prior to next week's meeting, so we can get input from the supervisor. It doesn't, I don't recall in any of the conversations we've had in township that buying single-family houses to operate in this kind of manner were on, was on the plan for what the township wanted to do. And since they have consistently been working with the Housing Authority to put people into Housing Authority properties like this, I think it's a little, I think we're creating a conflict that may not exist. So I would suggest we, I would suggest we not keep it in committee and move it forward. And if I'm wrong, we can always pull it back into committee next week.
Any other discussion? Charisse?
I just want to kind of piggyback on what James just said because our township works very closely with the Housing Authority anyway. So, and I'm trying to think, isn't there some kind of agreement that we have from the township and the Housing Authority? You're, Daniel, no, yes?
Yeah, let's not have thinking.
No, but I'm just saying, I thought that there was already some kind of agreement that we had anyway, where we worked with the Housing Authority anyway. Therefore, keeping this in committee seems to me to be an issue that's not needed. We can just go in and vote to do this and sell the property to the Housing Authority. We know what their goals are and what their mission is. And I don't see a problem with that. Because they have the same goals, which is to provide affordable housing to people who need affordable housing. I don't think that it's that difficult a thing to understand, but.
Any other discussion? All right, so the, Grace?
Sorry, just wanted to share my opinion for still standing by seconding the motion is I think that, you know, while I think that overall this makes sense, I think it's a big thing, it's, you know, three homes, a decent amount of money in real estate. And while I do think that this looks really promising with the Housing Authority, I think that there are some questions that do need to be addressed and that might take more time, too, as I'm thinking about talking about preference for Urbana residents, like that might be something for, that might be a longer conversation. I'm not sure what the timeline is here. But I think that this kind of decision warrants getting all the answers and taking a little time if we need to.
All right, so the motion on the floor right now is to keep this in committee. James has suggested that we change it, but it sounds like Grace wants to stick with her motion. Chandra, do you want to amend your motion or would you like to stay with it?
I'll stay with it, thank you.
All right. Kim, did you want to add something?
Just for what it's worth, that is one thing Sheila did mention to me, that if we did need the additional two weeks, we would be okay.
Okay, excellent. Since this is an ordinance, will the clerk please call the roll?
Wu?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right, that stays in committee. The next item is a resolution, thank you very much, Kim. Resolution number 2023-05033R, resolution in support of fair housing for all regardless of source of income. This was council, I'm gonna start with, I guess we'll start with Chris. Do you want to present this?
I can do that. On the agenda for tonight's May 1st meeting of the committee, the whole, we present a resolution in support of fair housing for all regardless of source of income. The resolution was written with the help of Fair Housing Partners who are working throughout the state to educate communities about the new Illinois law adding source of income as a protected class in the Illinois Human Rights Act. The purpose of this resolution is to both recite why the new law is important to our community and to declare the city of Urbana's commitment to helping any person denied fair housing solely because a rent voucher is one of the person's sources of income. Passage of this resolution is a necessary and a timely response to the conversations and public events during the last month about source of income discrimination. This resolution reflects Urbana's 44-year commitment to fair housing since the prohibition of source of income discrimination was adopted in Urbana's Human Rights Ordinance on April 24th, 1979. Since that date, Urbana has officially supported fair housing for voucher holders and other people using rent assistance, and will continue to do so. That's all I have.
All right, Dave, would you like to talk a little bit about your memo?
Certainly, thank you. In my review, again, there's only a couple of recommendations that I had. And please understand that, you know, these recommendations are just that, they're not an attempt to twist your arm and suggesting that these changes have to be made. Appreciate Ms. Pat's commentary about my first one, which is the ninth whereas clause about the reference to that particular case, which is out of the District of Columbia. Not going to negative to anyone, sometimes I do this kind of thing, too. When I looked at them, I just couldn't put that case together with the statement in there. But for the fact that I did see other cases that actually did that, which is why I just suggested. I think we're clear on the idea of potentially amending that to just say there are cases within the United States that have actually made that determination, so that we're not necessarily having to reference any particular case on that. The other two were just recommendations on the idea of, and I'll kind of caveat this with Ms. Pat's commentary, too. When I prepared ordinances, a lot of times I may reference a statute or another ordinance. I've not really referenced cases in them. And over the years, what's happened is that maybe six months, a year later, that ordinance or statute changes, right? And so when I've prepared them, I've always thinking, okay, if the purpose is to make this longstanding, to stand the test of time to a degree, you know, I want to word those to the effect that at any particular point in time, if I'm sitting here looking at this on today's date, the language would reflect that we're going to use whatever law is in place on that particular day, whether it's today, a year from now, or 20 years from now, to try and account for that. Certainly respect Ms. Pat's commentaries, on the receiving end of that, maybe it doesn't look like that's the purpose behind the idea of those suggested changes to the point where maybe a receiver is thinking, well, we're walking into this presuming that, you know, this law is gonna end up being changed or modified in some fashion. So again, those were just recommendations on that. Certainly she is correct, I think I got forwarded, I think her indication of the council on some of her comments, that if the preparation for this is just to leave it and say, as of today, this is the lay of the land, and leave it that way. And if for some unforeseen reason down the road it ends up changing, we can circle back and just either do a new resolution or amend it in the future, perfectly fine, and you can set it up that way. But I just want to let you know, my mindset on some of these things when I'm looking long-term is just try and generalize it enough that we account for potential changes that may come in the future and not to suggest that, you know, we believe this is, you know, not something that, you know, is gonna stand the test of time itself. We certainly see in, as Pat commented, aren't all law is transitory, whether it's a case or a statute. And so, you know, it's just a question, well, do you want to try and account for that in some fashion? If you don't, and either way you go, you can't go wrong.
All right, let's start with questions. We'll start with Chandra and then James.
None at the moment.
Yeah, I don't really have a question. I do support the use related to the ninth whereas, that I think, that's what Pat suggested we might want to use as an edit, but that's my only comment.
Any other questions? Charisse, do you have a question? No. Okay, if there aren't any other questions, I actually have a question. I can ask a question without turning over the chair, is that right? All right. My question to Chris, my neighbor,
Yes.
is, in the therefore, be it resolved, it says the city of Urbana will continue to follow the appellate court interpretation of the law? I'm wondering why we have to specify the appellate court interpretation and just say that the city of Urbana will, the city of Urbana does prohibit discrimination and, like, I'm just asking why we have that appellate case in there?
Well, we're laying a foundation for why the ordinance is valid and supported. And so we're just, that appellate court interpretation is the latest, the 2004 ruling is the latest interpretation of the law. And that's the foundation for us able to prohibit discrimination on source of income.
So it seems to me like that would be a whereas, that appellate court decision?
Well, it is, it's up in others. I mean, the one above is that Godinez versus Sullivan Lackey is the prevailing precedent.
That's my only question about this, is whether or not it's needed to?
You think it's duplicative?
Yes, that's correct. But that's just my question.
Yeah, yeah.
Grace?
Thanks. Meryl, I agree with that suggestion, I think that that would be a good one. And I had some other recommended changes in the therefore clause. I have pulled up there just a visual person to read it, rather, if I may pull them up on the screen, I don't know.
Oh, you want to pull it up on the screen?
Yeah, I already have them up there, I just don't know if it's chair before I get up and do that.
Can we do a motion for the resolution first and then do amendments later?
So Grace, the only thing I'm concerned about is James and Chandra can't see this. So let's read it. No, they don't have access to the projector where they're at. And it's about a 20-second delay in terms of the screen. Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if she put it up on the presenting table, we could see it. Because I'm streaming in audio at the moment.
Yeah, I can see it now.
Okay, great. So Grace?
So, I was backtrack, because also being another kind of sponsor of this resolution, what I think the purpose is, is to clarify, kind of resolve the issue that was brought up in the presentation on the 20th, specifically about the complicated detail of enrolling in programs to be able to accept a voucher if a landlord were going to rent to that person. And so this amendment is just including that specific piece in the underlying parts about prohibiting discrimination, including a landlord's refusal to submit to inspection or enroll in required programs to accept such payment from a potential tenant. And I think that's just an important piece to clarify here because that's the issue that's been brought up. And, you know, I appreciate that we've had this ordinance for human rights and non-discrimination for a long time, this isn't anything new. But it seems like since we had some confusion on this particular issue, that's why it's important to include that specifically here. I think it'll be important for the public, for us as a city, and then also for future generations of a next council mayor and staff that come in the future, I think it'll be important to have this on the record. And again, I agree with removing the appellate court interpretation and just say that the city of Urbana will prohibit discrimination. I did send this in to our attorney and some executive in advance and opened to hearing if there's issues or if this is also kind of the agreement of how we are interpreting and handling this as a city.
Diane, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, we did review, it was reviewed, and I did send a slight change in the language to you. Would you like to read that or do you want me to read that?
Sure, you may, I didn't see it as a substantial change.
It's not a substantial change, but it helped, because there was some question about what you meant by what was in the parentheses of what you sent in. So it would read, therefore be it resolved, the city of Urbana will follow the appellate court interpretation of the law and will prohibit discrimination in housing based on source of income, including a landlord's refusal to rent to a person solely because a housing choice voucher or other rent subsidy or assistance program will pay a portion of the rent. And in parentheses, whether such refusal is demonstrated by a landlord's refusal to submit to inspection or to enroll in required programs to accept such payment. So the main change is adding the clause, whether such refusal is demonstrated by.
All right, so we've had some questions. We'll go ahead and move forward with anybody who wants to offer a motion. Chris?
Okay, I will motion that resolution number 2023-05-033R, a resolution in support of fair housing for all regardless of source of income be sent to the next city council meeting for approval. And so I'm just making a motion for the entire resolution. And then I guess we do discussions regarding amendments, so. And I would, I guess I would offer that the ninth whereas be amended according to the memo that we had, that the courts in the United States have rejected landlords' claims, that they would experience a financial burden. that they would experience a financial burden by accepting a housing choice voucher because they were unable to show that signing the HAP contract and allowing a rental unit to be inspected involved any additional cost as written by the city attorney. So that ninth whereas be changed to his recommendation. And I would submit further that the 16th and the 19th whereases and the therefore clause recommended by the city attorney not be accepted and that be left alone, but there might be an amendment regarding the therefore clause from others.
All right. So the motion needs a second?
A second.
Okay. So it's a motion by Chris and seconded by Grace. There was some discussion about potential amendments to this at that time. If anybody wishes to make an amendment, do so now. Grace, did you want to do one?
I guess I'm kind of confused where we are, like, if the amendment I already proposed was accepted in that motion or not.
No, it was not. So when Chris made the motion, he said the only thing that he changed in the printed document was that ninth whereas clause, so nothing else has been changed at the moment.
Got it. Thank you. Then I would repropose my amendment to add the language on the screen that we discussed, and also remove following the appellate court interpretation of the law.
And do you want to add the whether such statement that Diane proposed?
I thought there was a.
To me, it seems like just wording. I'm curious if you think there's a substantive difference there.
Carol?
I'll speak to the, what we thought it would help clarify. So what we heard in the sort of parsing of this whole thing about being able to compel a landlord to participate in the contract with the housing authority to accept a voucher, was that the thing that flips it from being a voluntary program to being mandatory is when the voucher holder has met all the other requirements. And so it's sort of, the mandatory aspect of it is subsidiary to the person qualifying otherwise. And so when those two things, the way that you had it drafted, those two things sort of stood on their own, independently of each other, and our goal as a, in drafting this proposal, proposed amendment, was just by putting it in perens, was to make it clear that that is subsidiary to the person otherwise qualifying. That was the goal of it.
Grace?
Thanks for the explanation. I'm weary of parentheses. I'm not putting any of that in parentheses in my support. And I definitely hear your point there, and I was thinking about this as well. And that's why I tried to put at the end, from a potential tenant, because I kind of see what you're fault, I see what you're getting at, you know, and I think that it kind of says that, like, including, that the landlord can't discriminate solely because of a housing choice voucher or other, and then that the landlord also is prohibited from refusing to enroll in whatever programs required to accept that voucher from a potential tenant. And that's kind of how I was trying to address that, because I understand it's not saying, you know, every landlord has to enroll in this program if there's not a tenant that they want to rent to who is a voucher holder. So I don't know if that.
I could try, I could try a tweak to what you had written, if you're open to it, which is, and I think adding those, from a potential tenant, I would say from an otherwise qualified potential tenant, to clarify that the person has to be qualified before that mandatory aspect kicks in.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. I think potential tenant, I think, leaves it a little more open, as in it's someone they would rent to, because then I think with that, then we have to clarify otherwise qualified based on nondiscriminatory characteristics, right?
Isn't that, I mean, I want to be sure that we are all on the same page about the meaning of it, but it's, as we've walked through this, it's that you treat all the tenants the same, you take them through all of the, whatever your normal legal screening process is, and then if that person is qualified, and, well, maybe the word is just qualified.
Also, the more I'm thinking about it with, I think it also kind of covers it with whatever programs are required to accept such payment from a potential tenant. So if, it's kind of like they wouldn't be in this position of accepting this payment if they didn't, hadn't already gone through that process.
I think there is a chicken and egg thing here that I just want to be sure. So a landlord's not required to go through that process until, they're not required to go through that process until a tenant presents themselves and has been qualified and says, I would like to pay with a voucher, and then the landlord, at that point, is required to do this. So I think, but to say a potential tenant, they, a potential tenant may have been qualified or may not have yet been qualified. So that's the, my interest in narrowing that.
Yeah, I see. I think by saying to accept such payment means that, you know, they plan to accept the payment of the voucher. And so I feel like that kind of narrows it down. Like, if there was a tenant that they weren't going to rent to, then they wouldn't be in the position of having gone through, say, that selected them, and now, in order to accept that payment, now they are required to enroll in these programs, so that they can accept that payment.
I get it. I think if you said qualified tenant, then it takes, qualified potential tenant, it takes the guesswork out of it. It takes the, it takes the, any ambiguity out of it, and I don't think you, I don't think it undermines anything you're trying to say, but it adds clarity. It removes room for misinterpretation.
All right. So right now, we have a partial amendment that is to remove the appellate court interpretation of the law from therefore, and we have Grace's suggestion, and including, unless Grace, you want to make any change to this. Do you want to make any alterations to this statement, Grace?
I do not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. So that's the amendment right now, to remove the appellate court and to add in the remaining of that statement. I have a motion from Grace. I do not have a second.
Second.
I'll second.
Somebody.
Moved by Grace and seconded by, I'm going to give it to Chandra. Any discussion on this amendment? We'll start with James and Chandra. Do you guys have any discussion?
No further discussion.
None here either.
Anybody in the chambers? Sharice?
Is this particular thing that we're voting, getting ready to vote on, the motion that's been made just regarding the therefore statement?
That's correct. It's just the amendment at the moment, and then we'll go back to the original motion.
Okay. Because it seems that, I don't know about anybody else, I'm kind of confused. I think that, I think that there maybe needs to be some clarification between, in the language, because just listening to Carol and Grace, I think, I think one wants to be more specific on a legal level, and one wants to be more specific on just the language of the resolution itself. I'm not sure, because I just said, I'm confused. So I'm not sure exactly what the debate was about regarding, except about the qualification of the renter regarding if the landlord says that they don't accept vouchers after they maybe qualify for rent for every, on every other level. I don't know. That's what I'm saying, I'm confused. I see people shaking their heads, and I don't know.
Chris, would you take the chair?
So if somebody could clarify it for me, I'd be happy.
Okay. I'm taking the chair, and I recognize Mary Alice.
So this is what I'm thinking about this. It says, and including a landlord's refusal to submit to inspection or enroll in required programs. Basically, what we're saying is, the items that they have to go through in order to accept the payment is what they can't object to, right? They can't not participate. That, in essence, is what you're asking for here. So can we just say, and including a landlord's refusal to complete the required material to accept payment, and just leave it like that? Then we get out of the whole potential tenant, it's just, and there's different rules, right? So for different housing voucher stuff, there could be different rules. So that's my suggestion, but I will relinquish, I'll ask for my chair back.
Chair recognizes Mary Alice's chair.
Thank you, Chair. Grace?
Thank you. So could I clarify, your suggestion was, it seems like the language is kind of the same. You're almost suggesting just remove the whole from a tenant, just that the landlord would need to enroll in required programs to accept payment?
Yes.
Period? We can, that seems even less specific, and I don't know if the want was to go more specific. I don't have a problem with that, but I don't know that it addresses the issue of Carol wanting qualified in there. Also, the way I see it is that a potential tenant that they want to accept payment from is someone that the landlord has deemed qualified. I feel like that kind of goes without saying, and that it can be used to say, well, they weren't qualified for whatever kinds of reasons, which a landlord does have the right to do, as long as it's not a protected class reason. And so I think that, you know, leaving that up to a landlord, as long as it's not against a protected class for who is a potential tenant of theirs, and if they need to accept a voucher from them, then they do need to enroll in these programs.
All right. So rather than wordsmithing, as Chair, I'd like to make a proposal that we just vote on this amendment, and if there are other suggestions, that we can submit them for the next meeting, if this moves forward, to whichever one, council or it stays in committee. So I'm just going to call the question and ask for us to vote on the amendment. Just to be clear, the amendment removes the appellate court and adds in the sentence that is on the screen right now, as is, and including a landlord's refusal to submit to inspection or enroll in required programs to accept such payment from a potential tenant. That is what is on the floor right now. All those in favor of that amendment, please say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
Chandra, were you voting for or against the amendment?
For the amendment.
Okay. All right. So the amendment passes. Now let's go on to the main motion. That main motion, just as a refresher, was for the exact stated resolution with one change, which was in the ninth whereas clause. Is there discussion on the main motion? We will start with Grace.
Thanks so much. Just want to say that I think that, you know, this is a very, very important issue, obviously, that housing discrimination as an obstacle to being able to use housing vouchers, is a huge issue in our community and requires a lot of further discussion and work. I think that, you know, this resolution is a good step, just to clarify the record for an issue that was brought up on a particular piece of this large puzzle. But I think that we need to address open publication of discrimination, saying that we won't rent to voucher holders, which, the way I read it, is absolutely covered in the human rights ordinance, and the Human Rights Commission has the authority to investigate and look into. I think that we do need to send fines and take legal action against discrimination, and have that be a potential revenue for the city. Have all the discriminatory landlords pay as a new revenue source for the city, I think would be great. I do think that we need to do better as a city. I think we need to be proactive, and rather than reactive and waiting for a perfect complaint with a clearly denied application for a specific reason on the record, which of course landlords aren't going to do, that's the thing, is that there are backdoor ways around it to discriminate. I don't know that hardly any of them, or a very small percentage of landlords who do discriminate, would openly say in writing on an application, I'm denying you because of this clearly illegal reason. I think a lot of it is more nuanced than that, and I think that education is absolutely important, and we do need to be educating landlords and tenants. I don't agree with choosing education over punishment for discrimination for continuity. I think that it's been kind of unclear understanding about how the system works, like this program enrollment, and I would really like us to do better and have an Urbana where landlords know that it is absolutely not okay to discriminate for housing, employment, whatever else, from our protected classes, and they know that if they do, there will be consequences and they will get fines until they change their ways, and if not, they can continue to feed the revenue of the city of Urbana until they change that. So I would really like to see more. I'm not sure all the steps, how to do it, it's a big complicated thing, but I am absolutely here to try and help make that happen. Thank you.
Anybody else in chambers that would like to discuss? Chandra, you're up next. Would you like to add anything to the discussion?
Nothing further. I agree with what Grace said about making enforcement a bigger priority. I think the time for quote unquote "education" has passed, and it's time to be more proactive in enforcing what we already have on the books, in addition to this resolution.
James, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Chris, will you take the chair for a moment?
Chair recognizes Mary Alice.
Well, first I'd like to say thank you to the probably hundreds, if not thousands, of people who work on this in our state, in our country. It is very, very clear to me how challenging it is to use a housing voucher in any circumstance. There are a lot of roadblocks, I think, put up for people, one being that the apartment has to be vacant in order to rent it. That is huge. In our community, everybody starts renting their apartments for next year in October. I'm not kidding. Like, their lease starts in August, and then they're all ready renting for the next year in October. So there's a lot of barriers. If we can remove anything, I think we're making progress. So I did want to call out, because there are so many people, including township and the tenant union, but also fair housing, there's a lot of different people around our state who have been trying to make this easier for rental users, voucher users, sorry. The one reason that I had suggested maybe altering this language was to make it more clear that it's not just housing choice vouchers that we are talking about. There are other kinds of subsidy programs. I clearly remember when there was COVID dollars, that there were landlords who refused to accept the money for COVID. So that was my intent by trying to clarify this, was to make it a bit broader, so we're not only focusing on the housing vouchers. So that is my comment, and I would take the chair back.
Chair recognizes Mary Alice. I mean, relinquishes the chair.
Thank you again.
I don't know how to do this, do I?
Is there any further, I think that was, everybody had an opportunity. All right, this is a resolution. So all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes and goes on to council. Thank you very much. Now, out of all this paperwork, I will find my agenda. Here we go. The next item on the agenda is council input and communications. Does anybody have any council input for tonight? Grace?
Well.
We'll go with Grace first.
Oh, sorry, I was just pointing at Chris, because I didn't know if you could see him out of your periphery there.
Oh, I couldn't. Chris, did you want to add something?
Well, I just want to thank the public for participating in this issue on housing vouchers. I think we, Mary Alice put it well, that it is really hard to get an apartment in Urbana, and the opportunity for vacancy is tough, the price and everything, and what Danielle was trying to point out was that you only have a very small window to use these vouchers. And so any kind of barrier that a landlord is putting up is just throwing people out to the streets. I mean, and they don't, they won't have time to. I mean, and they don't, they won't have time to, for us to, we can't enforce it fast enough for them to be able to get that, get that apartment. So I really appreciate everybody's understanding and discussion about this, and trying to make it better for residents in Urbana to, you know, use a voucher in our community. I guess the other thing I want to emphasize, what the mayor said, is that Thursday, May 4th, come out 3:30 to meet the chief, or the candidate for chief, and get your questions in. Thank you.
All right, anybody else would like to offer council input tonight? Okay, and with no further business in front of our committee, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.